Good morning. We will call the regular meeting of the Athens County Regional Planning Commission to order for January 14th, 2021. Happy New Year, all members and guests. Hope everybody's doing well this morning. We do have a quorum of at least nine members present. By my count, we have over 10. And it looks like there's an empty chair joining us. So it's Member Maiden. Good morning, Jeff. The first item on our agenda this morning is the approval of minutes from December 10, 2020. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes that Member Pearson sent out?
I move to accept.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes by Member Jeffers. Do we have a second?
Second, Patterson.
Second by Mayor Patterson. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from December 10, 2020? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you, Steve, as always. Next item on our agenda is swearing in of a guest wishing to speak. I don't believe we have any guests on our agenda this morning. So we can move on to next item, which is announcements and updates. Any members have any announcements or updates to share with us this morning? Very well. Okay. We did not have any new business that was presented to the Regional Planning Commission for this morning. Does anybody have new business we need to discuss prior to moving on to old business? All right, moving right along. Next item, continuing discussions, the US-50 corridor sewer expansion project.
Well, the beginning in February, weather permitting, the first contractor is scheduled to be in the field doing his work. The other two contractors are planning late April, early May, get started with theirs. So we've been able to secure some more money for an additional phase at this point. So it looks like we'll be going to bid in March on the next phase, try and get that moving along. And so if all goes well, we'll have enough money to get everything but one phase underway this year. And we're hoping to get the other phase underway next year. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Lenny. Is there any other discussion on that? Any other comments or questions or?
Yeah. Hey, this is Steve Pearson. Lenny or Chris, will you guys be posting the plans again at your county website like the first set?
Yes, we're going to be putting the updated plans on. We're in the process of converting to a new web hosting. So once everything will be updated.
Okay, we're starting to get calls again here at the township hall from citizens that have questions.
Yeah, we'll make sure they're up there as soon as we can.
Okay, good deal. Then a second question I've got too is early in the first round of bidding, all the unsuccessful bids, the township, Alexander and Athens Township had compromised a little on the trench backfill and the asphalt finish. Will there be an opportunity for us to renegotiate that? Because from what I understand, was the one of the aspects of the final overlay of asphalt on our roads had been eliminated in the plans that were approved.
Yeah, I think if you guys want to talk to the engineer about what his plans are, with the amount of money that's there, I don't see any reason that it couldn't go back to the original design. The problem was is that we couldn't bid it that way. USDA wasn't going to allow us to do it that way. But I think there's enough money that, you know, change order takes care of that. So just reach out to Gary and have a discussion with him. And he'll bring it back to us.
What we wanted to do, what we had compromised a little on the backfill in the trench and the amount of asphalt in the trench in order to get a final two inch overlay over all the roads that were disturbed, rather than have that crack on each side of a trench where we had to fight the infiltration of water and salt all the time. So, all right, get with Gary Silcock, correct?
Yeah, because the USDA wouldn't approve an overlay. They just wanted the fill. So but we plan, you know, his discussion with us is that we would be able to do an overlay.
All right, good deal. Thank you, sir.
I also want to mention that we've been having informational meetings the last couple nights, and we're going to have a couple more next week for different aspects of the first four or five, I mean, the first five contracts. So people are, we had a really pretty good crowd last night, lots of good questions. So everybody who's, you know, a part of the project, they're getting, you know, communicated with, and then we're having these Zoom meetings.
Right. Just so the commissioners are aware too, we, the township has approved for Columbia Gas permit to use the right of way to relocate some gas lines out on Hooper Road in that area over on Carroll Lane. So Columbia Gas should soon, they've got the approval, it should now start relocating some of those gas lines that were interfering with the sewer.
Okay, unless there's anything else on that, that discussion, we can move on to electric aggregation.
Paul, I have a question I'd like to ask. Lenny had me give a call to Harold Laughlin, who's evidently arranging to get a lot of fill. And I believe it's from this project, but I'm not sure. But it raises a question that I wasn't completely sure about. And I don't know if Jack Pepper's on the line or not. But I encouraged Harold to call the Health Department. He, where he wants to have fill put is near his house out off of the four lane west of Athens. And he had a question about, is this in a map floodplain? And it's not. And as I was talking to him, though, I said, you know, the Health Department also has a notification process. And I don't know if it's a formal application, but they want to make sure any fill that goes in anywhere, for that matter, is what's called clean hard fill, just not a bunch of trash in it. And I don't know if the Health Department has a formal application for that, or how much they want to get involved with any of this. But it's something that if we don't have an answer today, that's fine. But it probably is worth discussing because this project's going to generate a lot of fill in various areas. So just a point to keep in mind.
Hey, Bob, this is Steve Pearson. I drafted an application for that for the Health Department several years ago when I worked up in Nelsonville. So they, I believe they do have an application. And like you said, it's really just to verify that the material's clean hard fill, and essentially someone's not creating a sanitary landfill. That's basically what it's doing. So it's kind of a formality, but it's good to have that place, too.
Yeah, I mean, if they have a process, we want to honor it and make sure people are aware of that. So the more, the more word we can pass on that, the better. And, you know, I really should know. I felt bad. I didn't have a definite answer for them. I just knew that they, they like to be made aware and they like to be involved. It sounds like there is a formal application. So.
Right. Some of this may have come up too. The commissioners have gotten a call, this has been quite a few months ago, about concrete and other clean hard fill that had gone in at the corner of Bent Brook and Hooper Road, and wanted to know if the township was aware of that. And again, that would have been something not in the designated or identified flood hazard area, but needing a permit from the Health Department. So.
And these, these issues generate a lot of public attention, too. Everybody sees that happening, and they want to know what's going on.
Yes.
I think Jack was about to join us, Bob, to your question, but I don't see Jack's name on here. So.
Here, Paul.
Oh, he's, you're listed as me, Jack.
Well, well, I'm honored, I guess.
Jack, did you hear my question? And it sounds like Steve answered it, but we've been.
I did not hear it. I'm sorry. I just got on.
Yeah, okay, no problem. I had a discussion with a homeowner yesterday about some fill he wants to put in on his property. And I dealt with floodplain issues, but I told him that I thought the Health Department had a formal process for any fill going in. And I told him he ought to call Mike Cooper at your agency. But perhaps you can just briefly mention your process if somebody wants to have fill put in, because it sounds like you have an application.
Yeah, we do. It's actually as a, as a, we operate as a representative of the EPA. So the, the permit actually arrives at the EPA office. We're just more of a third party facilitator. But, but you can't, you know, you can't fill a floodplain without, you know, the proper permitting. It's a, it's a simple permit. It's usually a rubber stamp. But, you know, it just identifies what you're doing, where you're doing it. And it's sort of our opportunity to make sure to reinforce that you use clean hard fill and what that exactly is. So.
I'm assuming, though, that your permit process is beyond just floodplain areas, right? Isn't it any fill anybody's getting? Or is it just in the floodplain area?
Well, of course, there's a particular emphasis in, in the floodplain. We don't have as much jurisdiction over general fill that's, that's not tied back to some of the floodplain management rules. However, we do have an interest in what kind of fill is happening. So again, the big thing that's, that's, that surrounds areas not in the floodplain is the type of fill that you're using. So it's, it's less about the fact that you're filling and more about ensuring that you're using the proper kind of fill.
And is the floodplain you're talking about a formal FEMA map floodplain or any creek area that, you know, technically is a floodplain? It's just that they're not all mapped by FEMA?
It is, it is definitely more focused on the FEMA flood, the FEMA floodplanes. Again, though, the thing that people really need to be, be cognizant of is that, you know, Department of Natural Resources has jurisdiction, enforcement jurisdiction over any creek or any, you know, any waterway. And if you put the wrong kind of fill into, into any sort of state waterway, you can get yourself into a real pickle in a hurry with the Department of Natural Resources.
Yeah, and, and the Corps of Engineers. So, okay, well, that answers my question. Thank you.
Yep.
Just a real quick note, too, kind of an oddity, the difference between clean hard fill definition in this circumstance and what would be considered clean hard fill, say in the city's water protection area. Asphalt is considered clean hard fill as far as the EPA and the Health Department's concerned, but it's not considered clean fill in the city in the water protection area.
Right. There's a, there's a whole, there's a whole different set of rules that apply to wellhead protection area.
Yes.
Okay. Unless there's any other discussion on that matter, we can move on to electric aggregation.
Yeah, I'd like to highlight three things today. One, let folks know that the solar system program is still available. So that's the USDA grant managed for 18 counties. The solar credit was extended at the 26% rate for this calendar year. So that's a good thing. Secondly, I put two links in the chat. I also included one of them in the updates, the minutes from last month. And we'll try to get them out this month as well. But the EPA has a green power partnership program, which we are filing applications for. So every community that we serve in the county, which is the majority of the county, on that list here, struggling, since 100% of the default supply is 100% green sourced. Secondly, I want to draw your attention to an ongoing update we'll be doing for the carbon fee, just generating the Athens Solar Fund, so specifically for the city of Athens. If you remember the carbon fee, oh, yeah, in 2018, we started collections on that middle of last year. That fund is already $40,000. We need to update it for this month. Deposits should be coming in today, but generating about $8,000 to $9,000 a month. We'll be working with the city and the public to disperse those funds on solar projects in the near future.
Thank you, Luke. Any other discussion on that? Okay, we can move on to the Athens County Land Bank.
Um, let's see, we're just continuing on with our work. There are four demolitions in the pipeline right now. We're just acquiring more properties. We've started, Greg Andrews and I, we were working on this workforce development component where we're utilizing some job and family service programs where people can get paid. And we're doing waste diversion with that. So last week, we saved, I don't know, several hundred bricks from a property. And, but yep, just continuing on, this, this current demolition group that we're working on has got two in Gloucester, two in Trimble. And, you know, the FEMA project in Trimble is still slowly moving along. The appraisal process has been completed. So we're, we're getting closer. So just more of the same.
Thanks, Chris. Any additional items on that or additional comments? Okay. If not, we will move on to COVID-19 health emergency. And I think that would probably be for Jack Pepper.
Right, thanks. I gotta be honest, talking about floodplain management was kind of nice because my life is dominated by COVID-19 right now.
I'll be getting with you with zoning pretty soon, too.
Oh, good. Well, happy day. Just pile along. So.
Quite a bit.
So what's going on with COVID-19? So just to give a brief update on numbers, they're really fluctuating all over the place right now, which really makes it hard to forecast trends. Because, you know, two days ago, we were at 47. Yesterday, we were at 24. They're just, and it seems to be kind of all over the map right now. So what I can tell you about what's actually happening on the ground in Athens County is that we definitely still continue to see disease, and that it varies widely from day to day. And, and who knows exactly why that happens. But there are a couple of things that could be attributed to, including testing. It could also be contributed, contributed to, we've had some small mini outbreaks in some of our long-term care facilities, which of course will, will inflate numbers. And then we also are starting to see some of that student impact in our numbers again as OU starts to test students as they come back to campus. So, you know, numbers are kind of all over the place. We do continue to be fairly insulated relative to what's happening around other areas of the state. The north central part of the state, now the southwest part of the state, the hospital systems there are just totally overwhelmed and crushed. So Ohio Health of Lenis continues to sort of be plateaued in a, in a really good spot. So, so that's all really good news. We did get, we have been getting some vaccine. We started getting vaccine at the end of December. We're running a clinic today, actually, that will vaccinate most of the remainder of our Phase 1A recipients, which, which will in total number somewhere around seven or 800 doses. We've, everything that we've gotten, we've, we've basically been able to exhaust by the end of the week that we received the vaccine. So there just is not a lot of vaccine out there right now. We don't anticipate any change in that, despite, you know, the messaging coming from, from the state level with the age categories and the over 65s and the educators and those with congenital defects that, that they've identified as Phase 1B. We opened our, our over 65 vaccination interest list this week. We now have over 4,000 people on that list in, in less than 48 hours. I do think that the majority of the folks on that list are on that list right now that want to be on it. So I don't anticipate that, that number growing exponentially. But it's a lot of people. And, and it's a lot of people when you're only getting 100 or 200 doses a week. What was that number again, Jack? On the list? Yes. Roughly 4,000. Okay. I do know that, that some additional vaccinators are going to be receiving vaccine next week with us, along with us. So that will help. The inherent issue that would, that that causes, though, is that you've got seven or eight different organizations trying to deliver vaccine and, and no real unifying way to manage it all. So, you know, for example, Krogers may have some, and Shriver's may have some, and Ohio Health may have some, and the Health Department may have some. And, and trying to orchestrate who's vaccinating, who, even in our 80-plus category, because of that 4,000, roughly 900 are 80 and over. If we're all targeting that group, the management becomes a colossal nightmare. So I've lost lots of sleep and had lots of hair fall out over the last few days in, in trying to figure out how we're going to manage it. Because it, it really is, is not well executed. And it doesn't have anything to do with public health. And public health is in all likelihood going to take the brunt of, of the negative pushback, because I'm sure that people are going to be frustrated. That is the one thing I'm certain of. The good news is, is that because there are other vaccinators in the county that are getting vaccine, we could, in theory, you know, punch out the 80 pluses next week. You know, I suspect that there will be 1,000 doses of vaccine floating around Athens County in various places. And, and so, you know, we should be able to get all of the 80 pluses done and be ready to move on to the 75 and over category next week, or, or two weeks from, from next week. So it's not a perfect science. We're doing the best we can. The good news is, is that we are going to be able to get vaccine in arms. The bad news is, is that I think it's going to feel a little chaotic in the short term, because trying to get people into the right places and getting the vaccine is, is going to be a little challenging. So that's, that's the update.
Is there any means to have these additional suppliers do a report to you on a, on a daily basis so that you can take it off the main list?
Yeah. So, so I, I don't want to throw them under the bus, because I think that they are also scrambling to try to figure out just how they're going to pull off the management of all this. I did reach out to all of the vaccinators that we've been told potentially could get vaccine. The big issue is that many of them have large corporate offices that they have to deal with. The large corporate offices tend to be unwilling to deal with, with, you know, the local, at the local level. And of course, there are HIPAA issues that we need to work through. So, for example, I will pick on Krogers, you know, if, if, if the local Kroger pharmacies are willing to, to give us that list, that all has to be vetted through their Kroger corporate office. And, and then there have to be MOUs put in place and legal teams get involved. And it just, it, nothing moves quickly when you start dealing with corporate offices. And that's not, I'm not casting shade. I'm not, I'm not saying that they're inefficient. That's just the way those big corporations work. So, though, we're trying our very best to come up with solutions as to how we can make this work. You know, I did reach out to some of those folks preliminarily and, and planted a seed. I even offered, there's a process to transfer vaccine. And I offered, you know, to, to do large scale clinics in partnership to try to centralize the vaccine process. And, 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 you know, I understand, but, but many of them were just not interested. So, so we'll, we're going to, you know, everybody's telling me right now, Jack, you got to deal, you got to play the, the card your dealt. And, and that's what we're trying our very best to do.
Hey, Jack, this is the mayor. I was just contacted yesterday by a pharmacy indicating that they were getting the vaccine and wanting to set up a clinic. And I'm willing to work with them, much like I did with you, with the, using the community center. Are you hearing that elsewhere, that, that the vaccine is getting to pharmacies and that they can set up shot clinics?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm not, I, I, today is, there's supposed to be this major press event today, you know, that was, that was, you know, sort of pushed out by the governor's office. Local public health and the local EMAs are kind of pushing back a little bit because, because we don't know what exactly we're supposed to be saying. So I don't think I'm letting the cat out of the bag at this point. There is going to be a forward-facing website that I'm not sure if it's going to be stood up today or tomorrow, but it's going to be stood up by the, the governor's office. And it will identify all of the vaccination sites in each of the counties. There are going to be eight in Athens County, I believe. So, so all three pharmacies at Krogers, Trimble, Nelsonville, and Athens, the two Shriver's facilities in Nelsonville and Athens, the FQHC, the FQHCs that Hopewell runs in, in Nelsonville and Athens, our office, and Ohio Health, all are going to have vaccine next week. Everybody is scrambling to try to figure out how they're going to get vaccine into arms. And, and all that I can tell you is that our agenda is to continue to, to offer vaccination clinics at the Heritage College building. And so if, if, if Shriver's is contacting you, wanting to use the community center, I would encourage you to, to afford them that space. And, and, you know, we're all just trying to achieve the same end game. It just is, is unfortunate that it was decentralized the way that it was.
Well, yeah, no, of course, we will, we will certainly work with them to use the community center, because it's an easy to park centralized location in the city of Athens that a lot of our seniors are very familiar with.
Yep.
Anything else? Jack, thank you. Thank you for all the work your staff is doing, of course.
One other question. Will it all be the same drug company? Or would they be varied suppliers?
No, it's going to be varied suppliers. So, so they're, they're, they're mixing Pfizer and Moderna at this point, which only muddies the water further. You know, it's really important that, that wherever folks get their initial vaccine, that's where they go back to. So if you choose to go get your vaccine at Krogers or Shriver or at Hopewell, you know, it's, it's critically important that you go back to that place for a couple of reasons. One is because we are going to see two different versions of the vaccine in the county. And, and secondly, because those facilities receive second doses. And, and while they don't have your name attached to them, they sort of do. So if, if, right. So if I get 200 doses of Pfizer next week, that means that I'll get 200 additional doses of Pfizer allocated for second dose vaccines in three weeks.
Yeah, and getting that information out to the public's not going to be easy to make it understandable to them.
Yeah, it, it, it is, again, I mean, this is, you know, we're trying to build the airplane as we're flying it, right? And, and so it's far from perfect. But, but, you know, they really, in my opinion, made a massive error in not centralizing the vaccination process, at least in the beginning. I am uncertain why that decision was made. Public health screamed from the mountaintops that it was a mistake. And, and for whatever reason, they just chose to go a different direction. And, and, you know, we're going to make the best of, of the situation that's in front of us.
We'll continue the good effort.
For sure. Jack, a quick question. For, for people who have the vaccine, what does that mean to, can, can they still be carriers? Can they still be spreading?
The answer to that is yes. So, so the, the initial vaccine, we think, based on the early data, gives you 60, 60 to 70% protection. Once you receive the second vaccine with Moderna and Pfizer both, you're in the 90-plus percentage of protection, but it's not 100%. So you still can get disease. You still can spread disease. It's not likely, but it's still like the flu shot, right? It's actually better than the flu shot in terms of its efficacy, but it's similar in that, you know, you, you can still get disease even if you've been vaccinated. So the likelihood is, is small, but it, it is possible. And it's why, at least for now, you know, once you've received the vaccine, it, it doesn't excuse you from those, those public health protocols that have been in place for the past 10 months. So. social distancing, mask wearing, hand washing, you know, and the like. So uh, you know, the answer, the short answer is uh, yes, uh, the likelihood is is small, but 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 still possible.
Thank you, Jack. Any last questions for Jack on this this item? All right. If not, we will move on to a planner's report. That would be Bob Eichenberg this morning.
Good morning, everybody. I'll try to keep this brief. Uh, just some updates on our key projects. The paddle enhancement grant, which is putting in a a river access in Geysville is underway with survey work beginning. That's the Buckley Group doing that and and they're doing the engineering too. And we had a good meeting with Aaron McVeigh, Rome Township trustee. They're on board completely. It's on their property, so that's a good thing. But uh, he he's with their volunteer fire department and said they'd probably be able to help do some long term maintenance too. They can't commit to anything definite, but it's good to have their support. Uh, regarding the bike waste spur going into Chancy. Uh, phase one engineering is being completed. I think Chelsea told me uh February is the date for that to be done. Um, phase two, which goes from Route 682 up to the Bailey's area, up to the Chancy Park there. We're we're getting going on that. ODNR has some preliminary engineering done and the county's role is going to be primarily working with the property owner Jim Edwards. And uh, having that survey work done, which will probably also be done by the Buckley Group because they did the survey work on phase one. So that is underway. Uh, I just wanted to mention that I was the fifth voting member on the Ohio Public Works Commission Local Committee. And uh, that's a group of Commissioner Elias and Mayor Patterson. County engineer Maiden and um Ted Linska, Township Trustee for Athens. And we approved three projects, which is really good for the county. We rarely get three projects and it looks like we we're in the fundable range. And that'll be a a loan enhancement, which pays the interest on a loan for the Nelsonville Regional Sewer Project. Uh, Village of Chancy is getting some paving work done and uh Athens County is getting some paving work done through the county engineer. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, uh, commissioners authorized me to do a little bit of work with Chancy uh to try to help them get back into the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. And I summarized and gave some uh hopefully words of wisdom to Mayor Renner and Solicitor Shaw Stack. Uh, kind of my perspective on things they need to be doing. They're they're being a little bit hampered by ODNR's uh tardiness on getting back to the village with comments on a revised floodplain ordinance. They had to update their ordinance. They really can't do a whole lot until they get that ordinance updated, but there are things they can be working on. So hopefully uh Mayor Renner will get that today from me and uh that'll help him out. They have a a large mountain to climb, but they're willing to do it. That's all I have, Paul.
Thank you, Bob. Does anybody have any questions for Bob? I have a question for the commissioners. As long as we're on the subject of a planner's report, do we have any update on um uh, the replacing the the position of uh Athens County Planner?
Well, we hope to have it posted either next week or the week after. So we're still debating the job duties and how we're going to reallocate some of those in the pay range.
Thank you, Lenny. Okay, uh, if that's all, we'll move on to next item, which is our um, we're city, village, township and organizational reports. I'll just try to go through my screen here. Uh, first up would be the county commissioners with Chris Mill and Lenny Eliason.
I don't have anything to add.
Thanks, Lenny.
Um, we did our uh organizational meeting the other day and I'm going to be uh the board of on the Board of Revisions, which is a new role for me. So um, looking forward to that. And uh, I don't know, besides that, yeah. It's it's a new year, so hopefully a good year.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, we'll move to Amesville with Mayor Guzman.
Morning. Um, Village Productions was in the Ohio Capitol budget, got $50,000 for building upgrades in the community. We're looking forward to all the improvements that's going to provide good news. Uh, we managed to spend all of our CARES money before the end of December for last year, even though they extended it till December 31st of 2021. Nobody knew whether that was going to pass, so pretty much everybody was working as hard as possible to spend their money by the end of last year and we managed to do that. Mostly business support for the restaurant, the the bank, other community businesses in Amesville. Council met last night. We continue to meet via Zoom, but we I swore in uh two new council members to fill vacancies that we have on council right now. So uh, we've got some new faces on council. Look forward to working with them. That's it for me.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, Nelsonville, Scott Frank, City Manager.
Morning, everyone. I have nothing significant at this time.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, we can go to the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau with Boone Troyer.
Yeah, just a a couple of quick things here. Um, as everyone mentioned, we're still kind of working through tough times, even though we've we've switched over to a new year. Um, but we have two main projects going at the Visitors Bureau right now. One of which is a a really strong focus on outdoor recreation. Um, we've looked at some analytics and research um and had some conversation with some folks in the Hocking Hills. Um, they had a stellar year last year, um, actually one of their best years on and on record. Um, and so we we talked with them and and did some, again, some research on what that might look like for us. Um, so utilizing our outdoor recreation uh facilities, our trails. Um, so a lot of the messaging and things that you'll see coming from our office will be focused on that. Um, in addition to to the outdoor recreation kind of focus, uh, and those meetings that we're having. We're also releasing at the end of this month, a program called Curves Ahead Live. Um, it will be very similar to a radio show podcast type of feel, um, but it will be a live video feed on YouTube and Zoom. Um, we released that information yesterday and we have already had over 1,700 people respond, um, that they will be attending that. Um, we've had over 200 requests for maps and that's only by releasing the information yesterday. So we're very excited about that. Um, and with mentioning both of these things, uh, clearly travel and tourism is something that is very difficult right now. Um, it's kind of a double edged sword and hoping that folks come and stay and spend their money here, but also doing that in a safe way. So our biggest perspective here is that we want to do things safely. Um, and we really want to focus on those types of activities that can be socially distant, can be outside. Uh, and so those are the things that we will mainly be pushing kind of throughout the year of 2021. Uh, but those are two projects we have right now. Um, we are very excited about them. We've gotten some very significant response for both of those. Um, and have some programs uh and they're ready for for when the weather starts to turn. So we're very hopeful, but uh understand it's going to take some work. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Boone. Uh, Mayor Patterson.
Thanks, Paul. Um, a few items just to bring up. I want to kind of dovetail on what Bob Eichenberg was saying about round eight, round 34, um, W or uh, OPWC. Is that it was uh close to $500,000 in grants, uh, and then there was a loan and enhancement, which was another $370,000, give or take. Um, so it was substantial and they all scored very well. Um, we feel pretty confident, I do anyway, that that I will advocate to get them all across the finish line as we look at those. Stimson Avenue Project. Um, that is uh barreling along as we speak. There's two major phases. Phase one will begin February 1 and run through mid-July. And then phase two will pick up in mid-July on into October. Um, those are, the way they're phased out is north side, south side of the street. North side will be that first phase. South side will be the last phase. Um, there will be traffic flow always going through that area, one lane, but it will be um uh in the westerly direction. Uh, there will be detoured east. Uh, travel east on Stimson Avenue during that period of time. Um, that's a 1970s concrete roadway that was built back when the the river was rechanalized. It's lived its useful life as a concrete street. Um, it's due to be redone, so it'll be a complete overhaul, not just the street, but the sidewalks. And uh, some utility underground. Uh, most of the utility, most of the work you've been experiencing, if you've gone down Stimson is Columbia Gas and uh, our sewer line that runs through there and water. Um, but more to come on that. Uh, West Union is still going through design engineering. Uh, we did get the invite to apply for ARC Access Road to punch Herald Drive through between Union and State Street. Um, hopefully we're successful in that to get $500,000 to give a lot of relief to West State Street in the future, but we'll see how that goes. Um, a couple of things that I I think need, people need to be aware of, hopefully Steve Pearson, uh Township Trustees are aware. Um, there is a, an article that came out in the Dispatch a while ago. Jack Freck brought it to the attention of Mayor's Partnership for Progress. And that is indigenous indigenous burials, indigenous indigent burials, not indigenous. In indigent burials, um, and it was framed around the opiate uh epidemic as well as COVID-19. Uh, there there is funding that that kind of shifted to where funding uh up to $700, $750 for an adult. Um, I think it was $500 for a child. That has changed towards 1,000 for an adult and it's 750 for a child. Um, that is through the Board of Emolumers and Funeral Directors that that money is now being handled. Um, so as opposed to jobs and family services. Just FYI, um, I believe that there, I can't remember the actual amount. But it's something for uh the Township Trustees to keep in mind because uh it falls in your wheelhouse, I believe. Um, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, on that. Another thing that's kind of interesting is that um I've tasked Paul Logue, the city is is uh engaging with the Racial Equity Coalition um with our, a task force on diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, I've been doing a lot of edu, self educating, um, largely through the National League of Cities about redlining and deed restrictions. And I've asked Paul to look into deed restrictions. And we did identify um a deed restriction that uh indicates that black individuals are not able to purchase, be gifted, receive, transferred to, or whatever property. Um, now that flies in the face, as we're all aware of, 1964. Uh, and and uh, I've heard some people say, well, that's moot because of that. Well, it's not. It's still in writing. It's the property owner's responsibility to to um amend that deed if they choose to. One of the things that we are exploring in the city of Athens is having uh language to where the code office, if receiving a lot split um or a variance for their property through the BZA that we need to see the deeds. Um, so people have to provide a deed. The deed will be reviewed. If there's language in there that speaks to discriminating anybody. Um, it'll be on the property owners. Um, it'll be their responsibility to remove it. It is not cheap i- in the state of Ohio. This, I I brought this up at OML yesterday with Director Kent Skerritt. Um, I would like to see state action and I don't know if this group would like to be a part of that along with me. But uh, it would require some state action. Maryland, as the law director has indicated to me. The state of Maryland and the state of Virginia, uh, Maryland back in October uh of last year did change the way in which people could process a deed to have that language removed. They've streamlined it. There's no legal fee. Uh, and it's a streamlined process to get that done. Virginia has an even more streamlined process. So I want to get that out there. I I would love for our state legislators to change the way in which people can have their deed changed. Here's, here's my point with all of this, because I, again, I've heard some people um indicate, well, it's it's moot, you know, these have probably been transferring all along regardless of somebody's race. That to me is ridiculous. Because if anybody were to come across that and see that, that's part of the whole root cause of systemic racism. So just throwing that out there and I'll get off my soapbox, but I think that's important. I'd love to see a county wide effort if anybody is interested. Um, Paul's going to keep exploring this on the city side, but and uh, that'll include our three mile buffer. Um, the uh uh, for city council, um, city council, there are two members. There's a a ward representative that is not going to be running again, and there is an at large member that won't be running again. So you're going to see that uh kind of kicking up in the near future that that uh there will be an at large announcement. Uh, of of uh Peter Cottis will not be running again and Arian Smedley from the first ward has decided not to run again. Um, there are individuals who have indicated they will run, but you know how that goes in Athens. The the last thing I have to share is that Mayor's Partnership for Progress meets today. Um, and in February, um, our guest speaker will be Lieutenant Governor uh Houston will be speaking to the group. So uh, more to come on that. Um, I will open the door to to uh to have guests who want to attend MPP uh on that Zoom meeting and listen to what the Lieutenant Governor has to say. Um, but that should be a a pretty, a a good MPP meeting. They're all good. But that one will be uh particularly interesting, I believe. That's all I've got, Paul.
Hey, Paul, related to indigent burials. Whenever Jack Freck gave a presentation a while back to the Countywide Township Trustees Association. Um, in Athens Township, we updated our application. Um, and listed all the requirements. So if any township trustee would like to look at what I think is a good template. Um, that reflects the current uh legislative change. You could go to athenstp.com, uh, click on um applications and you'll see that application there. So any any township that might want to pick up on that, they're free to do that.
Steve. Um, oh boy, everybody got reshuffled on me here. Hold on. Steve, Steve Pearson, there we go. That's the township.
Yeah, um, we're continuing to work to try to recruit um Board of Zoning Appeals members since the passage of the zoning code. Right now, we only have two um people that have shown interest. Uh, we need at least five people to form a board and hopefully we can get two alternates also. One oddity, the way the state statute is written, any zoning commissioner um can be a resident just of the township. They don't have to reside in the zoned area. However, the way the statute's written, a Board of Zoning Appeals member has to live in the zoned area. So I had to get that classification or that clarification from Kirk Shaw, our new uh legal counsel um at the prosecutor's office. So we're still searching for board members for that. Um, had some discussions between the Buckley Group and um Alan Craig at ODOT regarding the Elm Street project. It's still on track to be bid um in early 2022 and worked to start that summer. Um, 552,000 dollar um ODOT TAP grant going toward that. The estimated project cost right now is 633,000 dollars. Um, and I've mentioned to Alan too that hopefully ODOT will kind of piggyback on that. If they close the median down at Johnson Road and reroute all that traffic up to the 682 interchange and then back down the Plains Road. There's probably going to need to be some signalization accommodation right there at Elm and High Street at 682. So, you know, I keep what I'm trying to do is get an answer out of them about the progress or the position right now of ODOT on median closure and there's just not any new word out there on what it is that they plan to do at that intersection. Um, the new shelter house and basketball court at the community park are completed. Um, the playground installation will probably start next week, weather permitting. Um, the playground installation will probably start next week, weather permitting, so we're moving ahead on, on both, on those projects, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Steve. Um, Jesse Schmitzer.
Hello, everybody, good morning. Um, just a couple of updates, um, especially with our transportation providers. Um, Athens Public Transit is still, um, operating on some limited scheduling, so all of the routes are back up and running with the exception of Line Four, which is the one that goes mostly through the neighborhoods of the city of Athens, um, and a couple routes, um, aren't doing their, their late, later hours, so they're hoping to get back to normal scheduling as soon as possible. For now, all fares are free for folks, um, they're really enforcing those mask rules on the bus to keep people safe. Um, Athens On Demand Transit, uh, is operating per normal, Go Bus is operating per normal, so, um, nothing, nothing going on with them. Um, as vaccines start rolling out, if anybody needs any transportation assistance, or if any organizations want to set up some kind of transportation for folks to get to these places where they're gonna be, please reach out to me or have them reach out to me, we're happy to help and collaborate with people to get transportation for these folks to get the vaccines. Um, and then lastly, this year, uh, the Athens County Coordinated Transportation Plan, um, is due for a complete rewrite, we are required to do that every four years. Um, it's a really important document that is required by the Ohio Department of Transportation for us to continually get funding for our transportation providers such as Athens Public Transit or Athens On Demand Transit. Um, so I'm gonna start rolling that process out in the spring, it typically takes about nine months, it's a really long process, but it's a great document in the end, and it really shows the needs of the community for transportation. Um, so with that, that's all for me.
Thank you, Jesse. Uh, let's see, Jeff Maiden, County Engineer, Jeff, good morning.
Good morning, Paul. I, I was, um, earlier when you saw, when I first logged in and I, you saw the empty chair, um, that was just, um, I've been working on this out-of-body experience thing, and I was uh, actually there, but you couldn't see me. That was my spirit. Um, so now I'm back, and um, I, we've got, uh, we started our ash tree program, uh, Greg Andrews brought that up, uh, I think last month, and um, last year, maybe we took down 300 ash trees, we've done more than that in the last 10 days. I've got, um, heard a, uh, college student, a brilliant young civil engineering student, he's got a 3.95 average in engineering. I, I graduated from U, I don't remember anybody who ever had anything quite that high. That's my nephew, Garrett Maiden. Uh, and he's, he's out there logging all these trees with my sheets, we're marking him, you'll see big white marks on the trees with a red ribbon around them, and then we're following up with a, a crew, um, a demolition train really with a, um, a grade all with a clam bucket on it, we've also got shears, and so we're, we're, we're gonna try to keep this thing moving. Um, as summer demands come along, it might be difficult to do, but I think, uh, we've probably, I'm estimating maybe we've got 4,000 to 5,000 trees to bring down, we've so far marked over 500. And um, I think, uh, we've got a slip repair project, we're gonna get ready to start, put it out to bid, it's 201,000 dollar project on County Route 75, this lingers since last summer, we got funding from Public Works Commission to do that job, designed it in-house, our, our total engineering cost is less than $5,000, I think, on that project. Um, and then we're basically, right now, I'm working on our goals for this year, and a work program involving, looks like we're gonna have about seven slide repair, landslide repair projects this year funded by FEMA and O E M A. Um, still not set on the bridge projects, I've got three set right now to do. Um, and working on our chipped and sealed program, um, gonna contract that out, and as was mentioned earlier, we're hopeful, it looks highly probable that we'll get that uh, um, a, a paving project, an asphalt paving project, about a 400,000 dollar paving project, and I spread those roads out around the county. Uh, we're gonna contribute, I don't know, close to that amount, over $300,000 out of our budget toward that, so, um, really working toward a comprehensive uh, plan, multi-year plans, what, what I'm trying to do is just, um, so this year, by, the goal is in the next two weeks to have our goals set for the rest of the year, what we're gonna try to get done, and um, something else I wanted to mention, oh, Steve brought up the, the uh, uh, Johnson Road intersection, that's really been on my mind, I've, I've talked to, um, one of the things that concerns me, because I lived in the same subdivision, um, for a long period of time, when I was first married, on my second, second marriage, uh, where, where Warren lives, um, you know, there's, there's difficult access, there's two subdivisions that come out at the State Route 682 intersection. We recently had another fatality at the uh, intersection out by Walt's Bar, where 13 enters Route 33, that's really dangerous. I, I remember a 17-year-old girl killed there a few years back, and she literally went through that, was broadside and died instantly at that, that site's had multiple fatalities in the last 25 years, I haven't really gotten into it, and I talked to, um, Jamie Hendershot about this about six weeks ago, and sometime before Christmas, I said, you know, you're closing, we haven't had an accident, a right turn accident in or out on Johnson Road in more than four, almost five years now, and um, and we did have two accidents, I think, in the last 10 years, but, but, and they were angle accidents on, on that right turn out into 33, and traffic's moving so much faster, so I've really struggled with it because, um, traffic speeds there coming south, after they cut through the Nelsonville bypass, they're running about eight to 10 miles faster than they were when I first became County Engineer. ODOT has the monitoring equipment, cameras up, so I've gone back and looked at those accidents, but the reality is, um, we got over, we have more traffic turning right, going to Athens, to Johnson Road, than you do, uh, you utilizing the six, the 680, um, 682 exit there in the Plains, near where Warren lives, there's more traffic on Johnson Road turning right than there is down there. Those 2,000 or 2,300 cars and vehicles a day are all gonna mostly go back down to that intersection, in my conversations with Jamie, um, the 682 intersection will not handle the closure of the uh, of the, the State Route 13 access at Walt's Bar, they can't shut that down because there's too much traffic that enters the highway there, and the 682 intersection won't take it, so you take, you got two subdivisions there at that 682 intersection, um, the subdivision where Warren lives, and then the one on the other side of the road, that come out into that same intersection, and I think that uh, that's such a problem, 682 intersection needs to be completely reconstructed to allow for all that traffic, and probably, ODOT's tried to guesstimate how much that traffic will go south to uh, um, to, to Union Street and State Route 56, a portion of that traffic will go there, a portion, most of it will go to 682. So, you're literally gonna double the traffic at 682, or something very close to it, and you've already got a, an interchange that really can't handle, um, really has problems now, so I, I, I really wish that, uh, I guess, the problem is, if I recommend that they don't do what they're going to do, and then there is, uh, the, the, the real difficult factor is, you got so many young drivers that really don't know how to drive yet, that enter, that enter that intersection from Johnson Road, so that's really the, the most difficult aspect to it, and that's what we see in the videos of the accidents that occurred last year there, or in 2019, is, is you've got people that are T-boning traffic coming south, it's not like they can't get across the intersection, I mean, they are literally driving into the side of traffic coming south, they're not watching, it's distracted driving, I'm, I'm almost sure of it, but that doesn't make it any, uh, less dangerous, and so, so that's the real issues, uh, um, do you divert all those, those, uh, young drivers over to 682 in each direction, so that if they do have accidents, all my kids had accidents when they were in high school, and they're having accidents at 30 miles an hour instead of, uh, you know, 70 miles an hour, that, those are the real, I think those are the considerations, I think it's not accident data that's driving, uh, the closure of Johnson Road on the 33, it's other considerations. Um, and so I guess I'd be open to, um, uh, continuing a dialogue with ODOT, I don't know if the county commissioners or this commission would like to take a position, the Township Trustees, we could have a meeting and discuss it. Um, the pandemic has made it convenient not to have public meetings, so, um, other than that, we're moving forward on our road program, bridge program, landslide repair program, and uh, that's enough, I, that's all I got, thanks.
Yep, Jeff, if I may, I have a real quick question, um, real simple, um, I received an email from, from Jack Helm, from, uh, pavement technology, they had indicated that they had done some testing, I think on Poston Road, do you have any updates on that? You know, do I need to watch this webinar, is it worth watching? What can you tell me about the product called, uh, uh, I don't know, whatever, some product that extends the life of asphalt?
Yeah, it's pretty amazing, really, it's a new, it's a, it's a coating that you put on asphalt after you pave a road, we tried that out there because we had multiple grants on that project, and we have very little, we had virtually no local investment, um, there was a price tag associated with it, I can't tell you exactly what it was, but it really is amazing, I've had other county engineers come in and look at it, they're marketing it, or a project out there on County Route 110, you put that coating on there, and what you'll see is photographs after it rains, and how resilient, and how really, it, it makes your asphalt impermeable, so it's supposed to extend the life of the asphalt, maybe five years, and more than whatever the normal length of the asphalt would be, and in our program, Athens County, if we get one for, if I get one $400,000 grant every year for paving, we've got a 35-year cycle on our asphalt, you know, back in the old days, 10 years was a long cycle on asphalt, so we're, we're, you know, we're aggressively going after federal grants, we're, to try to cut that down, I'm looking at different ways, we've gotta convert some of our asphalt pavements to chip seal, I don't think that's gonna happen, but we are chip sealing some of our asphalt pavements, our lower volume, because we, it's just obvious, uh, uh, but it's, it's a great product, that's what I would say, and, and, uh, you gotta compare it against the cost, but it's, it's worth watching, for sure, I'd recommend it.
If anybody's interested, the, the product's called Reclamite, R-E-C-L-A-M-I-T-E, Reclamite, um, all right, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Miranda Kreidler, Ohio University.
Morning, everyone, a couple of updates from the university, um, I'm sure everyone is aware, we have students, um, returning, uh, we've got about, uh, let's see, 3,300 students coming back to live in on-campus housing this semester, we've got, that's about, I think, double probably what we had last semester, um, but it's around half of what we would have in a typical semester, so that's for the on-campus housing piece. Um, we're gonna have about the same volume of courses running in-person, most of our courses are running in a variety of modes, um, so the students can, uh, participate fully remotely, or, um, with a combination of in-person and remote, uh, deliver courses. Let's see, we've got all of our students, uh, coming back to campus, are, uh, were tested, are being tested, and were tested prior to their arrival in Athens, um, so they had a kind of at-home kit sent, um, so they've picked up a fair bit of any, um, kind of positive exposure, um, and they're asking those students to quarantine, um, at home before arriving on campus. Um, we've got the vault testing facility set up in the tennis center, C V S is still on-site doing, um, asymptomatic testing, as well as Ohio Health, um, for symptomatic testing, so all of those, um, operations are still running for the semester. Um, I don't know if there's questions, that's sort of, um, I guess the only other thing I would mention is that our new chemistry facility is open for courses this semester, so, um, right down by university terrace, right adjacent to Clippenger, so, um, the chemistry courses are transitioning out of Clippenger into that facility, and will allow for, um, the continued phased renovation of Clippenger. Um, Heritage Hall, Jack mentioned, is also a site for, um, it's being used for community, um, vaccinations this semester, so it is, uh, construction is almost finished on that facility, um, down on West Union. That's all I have, Paul.
Thank you, Miranda. Okay, Scott Dunvee from the Athens County Auditor's Office, Scott? Okay, uh, Luke Salford, are you still with us, Luke?
I am, but nothing further at this time.
Thank you, okay. Uh, Molly Fitzgerald, are you still with us?
I'm here, Paul, um, two quick updates, one, the A D C is looking at applying for the Ohio Southeast Site Readiness Grant Program, um, that program offers a variety of due diligence studies, we're thinking about going after, uh, doing some site due diligence studies on some of that carpenter road land, um, out in the village, but of course, that will require some coordination with them, um, and then also, I just wanted to mention, the city's third downtown redevelopment district has been amended, the Seamen's Grocery Store, uh, now is the historic anchor for that district, it has new boundaries, and Paul did, did bring it forward to council on Monday night, it requires, you know, a 30-day public hearing, um, and then a 30-day notice before, um, council would adopt the ordinance, so we're looking at probably sometime in March, but, um, as a reminder, it'll be great because we'll be able to capture the increase in the assessed property value from that district, which does include that new Ohio Health building, um, which of course then can be reinvested back into that district for economic development purposes, so that's all I have. Thanks again, Paul, for all your work on that.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, almost done, folks, uh, Tim Waren? Tim, are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm here, I, I had to unmute myself. Uh, all we got is, let's see, Christmas Eve, we had a major problem with a dump truck that went over a hillside and turned over, so we, we got a big insurance claim on that in that snowstorm, we're investigating, putting up a new four-bay garage at, uh, Green Lawn Cemetery to store our stuff in, because we've outgrown everything we've got there. The other thing I wanted to say with the, uh, indigent burial, that, the way I understand that works, if, if a person's residence is inside a city, then that's up to the city to take care of the burial. Now, Nelsonville don't have a cemetery, so it still involves us, but if the person lived in the city, then it's up to the cities to take care of it. If they live in the township, it's up to the townships. The only thing to that is, if you can't ascertain where a person lived, then it goes to where they died at. It's a, it's a long convoluted mess, but anyway, all, that's all I got on that.
Sorry, guys, I had to jump off, are we talking about death certificates by chance?
Not, not necessarily death certificate, we're talking about indigent burials.
Okay, very good.
Who's responsible for an inju- indigent person, where they die at makes a difference or where they live at when they died.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay, that's all I got, Paul.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, Chelsea, do you have anything, Chelsea McKee?
Nothing for me.
Thank you, Chelsea. And Jessica Dine, are you still on?
Yes, Paul, thank you, I, the mayor covered all the project updates, they don't have anything else, thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Uh, did I miss anyone who would like to speak?
Or Jeff?
Yeah, I would just like to follow up on what Jeff, uh, stated about the 33 and Johnson Road issue, I think as we look forward, it's going to get worse, because there's still a lot of growth in this area, so at the very least, either the commissioners or this commission needs to step up and get more involved with the state on this before it becomes a nightmare that we'll all regret in the future.
I'm willing to take the lead on that, I guess I've struggled with, uh, uh, my conversations with ODOT and their, their position, and, and, um, but I'm willing to be, I'm willing to take the lead if others want to, uh, I could put a letter together and question some of these engineering issues, uh, because it really is, it's, it's, it's partially a, a philosophy and a decision of values, as well as, but the real impact, I see real issues with the impact. And, and ODOT has, ODOT has reasonable arguments regarding the safety, and safety always has to come first, so it's, it's, you're also gonna create unsafe situations at other locations, like Steve mentioned. Yeah, the traffic on 682 at your location, Warren's gonna be terrible to get, be able to get in and out of your, the, the, the drive into your subdivision there. to get, be able to get in and out of your, the, the drive into your subdivision there. I mean,
And the other thing that no one's really thinking about yet is when they move the upper levels of the grade school to the Plains Elementary location, there already, the number of Athens residents that will drive their children to school drop-off will quadruple. And it's going to blindside everybody.
It's going to be a nightmare, I think. And, and I, I talked to Tom Gibbs about this back earlier in the fall. And I think he, you know, I don't want to speak for him, but I think that there's a, there's a willingness to just defer to ODOT without really challenging some of these things. And, and I agree with you. I, I need to, I thought about it last weekend. I mean, at what point do we jump in? We normally would have an open conversation in a public meeting, be able to discuss these things. And then there was talk of having that in the fall. And, and I'll send a letter, I'll draft a letter today about this, and maybe review it with the commissioners. I don't know if this, and the township trustees, I guess. Those would be the three primary stakeholders. I can do that.
Right. Same thing here in discussions with Mr. Gibbs. I was concerned that more bus traffic would be coming to the Plains Elementary School, since everyone, just about everyone will be bused in. But he said that probably will not be the case. It'll be parents wanting to individually come in and drop off and pick up their children. What's going to happen? And I live right there in that, very, very close to that neighborhood. When I go home at night, I don't go on Johnson Road. I go up to 682, turn at the first light on Poston, and then go in the back way on Lee Master. And I think a lot of people are going to find their way that way to be more convenient to get to the elementary school than if they turned on Johnson Road. So we're going to see a lot of, a lot more traffic worn up in your area and at that intersection at Johnson and 682. And then, you know, we have, actually, part of that's Dover Township, section Lee Master Road's in Dover Township. So that'll be a whole new entry corridor into that elementary school, I think.
Yes. And I think the state looks on it. Silence is acceptance. So, you know, we've got to bring up our issues, or they will just steamroll it.
I'll call, I'll call Jamie Hendershot today and tell him I'm going to have a letter coming forward about the issues at the 682 intersection. I, nobody, I mean, this, this was prompted by after the third accident in 2019, a contact, and I said, I think it's time to close this. We had not had an accident since I became the county engineer, a left-turn accident crossing Route 33. And I monitored that with Debbie Fow before she left, before she retired. But in four and a half years, I, after we made those countermeasures, those countermeasures I recommended my first year as county engineer, we had no accidents, no left-turn accidents at all in four and a half years. But all of a sudden, in 2019, we had three major accidents. I went back and looked at that. There were a lot of, there was a lot of construction barrels in the median. I drive that every day. And so I think there was, there was a lot of activity there. I'm not sure exactly what happened. There was a lot of distracted driving, a southbound traffic moving faster. And so nobody disputes it's time to close the left-hand turn lane.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I sat behind a man and watched him go up, clear, and went out of his way to be able to go turn and go back and head to Nelsonville. I mean, some people purposely go, went around it, even after you made the correction. You know, and I don't know how you get around that. I wasn't close enough to get a license plate number.
Well, we closed the center median. That's what, that's what needs to be done. But the whole issue of just saying, well, you know, the attitude that, well, we're going to have to do it in 10 years, so let's just go ahead and close Johnson Road completely. And so I, I think the best way to do it, I thought, I drive it every day, and I've driven it every day for 14 years. And so I think that to keep Johnson Road open, and then make those 682 enhancements that need to be done, that entire interchange needs to be reconstructed. And then after that's done, then look at closing 682. And that's probably what I'll, that's what I'll recommend in, in the letter. It puts me on the line because the, the, the issue are the high school kids and, and the, that come out of there. I've been through this with three kids of my own. And, and myself at that age, I have five siblings. We all had accidents between the ages of 16 and 18 years old. And, and so, so the, I, I think the thinking is, it's much safer to have an accident at 25 or 35 miles an hour than it is pulling out onto a road where the traffic is averaging 68 miles an hour coming south. And so I understand that thinking. But you're gonna, you're going to create a lot more accidents at the 682 interchange, at the Elm Street interchange on 682, because you're going to double the traffic into an interchange that can hardly handle what you got now at 682. So it's a, it's a difficult situation.
Well, I think we need even more support given to Jeff in this effort than just letting him be the one hanging out there with his name on it, being the only one to reply. There needs to be additional sign-on of, of total area government commissioners, township trustees, whoever's involved in it. We need to give Jeff that support as well.
I agree with you, Warren, too. We need to have like a united approach to this because early on, we were asked in kind of a disjointed way how each one of the different political subdivisions felt about it, or different organizations. I think you're right. And Jeff, I appreciate you stepping up on this. If we go together and just have one united position that we present to ODOT.
And I think even with the amount of, of schools out in this location, the city's school system should be on board with us as well.
There are people that actively, there are citizens who have actively lobbied to have Johnson Road closed. I started hearing about it three years ago. And, and then suddenly, I, after the third accident, I hear from ODOT's safety engineer, and I know for a fact, these people have been calling him. They have his cell phone. He goes in and, and, you know, and so I don't know, you know, I, I understand, there's just a lot of forces at work. And it's all, all people that are genuinely concerned about their children driving to.
Exactly.
When it's, it's a legitimate concern.
That's why we need to get it right the first time and not string it out over a 10-year period.
Yeah.
And that's all I had. That was enough, I guess.
Anyone else for the good of the order? If not, our, a couple of people have logged off. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February 11, 2021, at 8:00 a.m. And unless there's any other items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion a second. All in favor? Thank you.